Good evening. I want to welcome you to the Thursday, September 18th meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Clark is going to do the invocation and I will do the pledge. Will you please stand?
Everyone would bow their heads, please. Our most kind and heavenly gracious heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight on this wonderful afternoon, Lord. And we lift up our country at this time, Lord. We lift up our community here with all the violence that's going on all over this country, Lord. It's a very important to remember that civility and a calming from you is needed in this country, Lord. And Lord, we just lift up the people of this nation. We pray for our local community. I pray for these, the commissioners, the school board, and our first responders, Lord, that put it on the line every day. Lord, we ask you to be over this meeting, protect us, protect the citizens that are here. Get them safely home, back to their, back to their homes at the end of this meeting, Lord. And we ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a moment, a point of privilege here. And I'd like for the commission to have, recognize a moment of silence for the passing of Charlie Kirk, who is a well-known leader in our country and recognized worldwide, if we can at this time, please.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any changes to the published, published agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add item number 29 to the published agenda, general business, to consider approval of the grant agreements for the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Grant Number 3-13-0018-052-2025 in the amount not to exceed $4,294,167 under the Airport Improvement Program project. The airport grant number 3-13-0018-053-2025 in the amount not to exceed $2,694,985 under the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, Airport Infrastructure Grant Program for airport development.
One second. Okay. We're going to add item 29 to our agenda. All in favor, right hand? Thank you. All right. How about the general business and finance?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve our consent agenda, general business, with the exception of any item Commissioner wishes to call.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remove item eight, I believe. It cut off, yeah, item eight from the consent agenda.
Okay. Anything else? I'm going to have a motion to approve the consent agenda for general business with the exception of item eight. Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Properly motioned in second. All in favor? Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for finance, with the exception of any item Commissioner wishes to call.
Okay, gentlemen. All right. That's financed as well. Properly motioned second. All in favor? Thank you. Commissioner Clark, we'll go back to item eight for you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I noticed this one, item eight. Glen County Police was looking to purchase two additional Harley-Davidsons and just curious of the reason and why this could be on the next year's budget item.
Certainly. Good evening, Commissioners. How were your night?
We're fine.
Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak about this, Mr. Clark Commissioner. Appreciate it. Our original plan was to have four motorcycles transition into them when we trained our members' effectiveness. It makes perfect sense. We don't have spare motorcycles. We have spare cars, we have spare weapons, we have spare equipment for every other item that we use for, for public safety. We've had the two vehicle, motorcycles up and running since August, excuse me, June 1st. Since June 1st, they've had over 420 interactions with motorists that resulted in either citations or warnings. They've handled themselves over 20 accidents, been engaged with the public at least 20 events, have four more coming up in the next month, and countless interactions with the public, which have been positive. August 21st, one of our motorcycles was on a traffic stop on Frederick Road in a bank parking lot and was backed into by a pickup truck. So that motorcycle is still down and will be down for another three weeks. Ideally, we want our motorcycle members to go out on patrol, in dual patrol for safety. And because of that, we've had a motorcycle and a vehicle with it. It's been difficult, but we obviously, we, we think having spare motorcycles will help us with our effectiveness, with our training, with maintenance. We can't always have a vehicle up and running. It has to go in for maintenance. We have to send officers for additional training. So having four motorcycles will allow us to do that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Well, no, I'm just, you know, I actually was out at Gary Lee's this weekend and there was a wreck last Friday, I believe, at Gary Lee's and the motorcycle officer arrived. And she didn't have a police car with her at the time. So is that standard practice? Or you said, you mentioned something, y'all were having a car with the motorcycle?
Well, no, because we don't have another motorcycle, we would have to send an officer out in a patrol vehicle, which they do work the same days. They could have been on another call. And she went and handled it herself, depending on how serious it was, they called for backup. But yes, ideally, we want, when there's motorcycles out there, we want two of them together for, for better visibility and for, to be able to assist each other.
I got you. Yeah. Well, and you said the other one will be ready in about three weeks?
That's what they're telling us. Harley-Davidson would depart. So with the accident occurred August 21st, we're still waiting for it to be repaired.
Do we currently have four certified riders?
We have three and we're sending another one next month and possibly another one the following month for training.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Do we need to vote on this here? All right, I'll need, I'll need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the unvoted capital purchase request in the amount of $59,392.18 to purchase two Harley-Davidson electric light motorcycles with funding to be provided by the police fund balance.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion to approve. All in favor? All right, those against? It's 3-3. I think it passes, doesn't it? 3-3 here?
Four votes.
Oh, needs four. Have to wait till Sammy comes next month? All right. Moving on. Public hearing land use. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Number 24 is ZM 25-17 Palmetto Lakes Rezone. Consideration of a change of zoning request for approximately 156.17 acres from PDG Plan Development to, PDG to Plan Development. Plan Development to amend the existing Golden Isles Gateway Plan Development, GC 34-99, as the Palmetto Lakes Plan Development property located at 755 Harry Driggers Boulevard and 5375 Highway 17 North. Parcel number 03-27626. Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Gemano Sand LLC owner. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Good evening. Christina Wright, Senior Planner. ZM 25-17 for Palmetto Lakes PD is a request to rezone from PDG to PD. So for this 156.17 acres, this property is located between 755 Harry Driggers and Highway 17. So here is the location and zoning map. As you can see, the current zoning is PDG. It's located to the north of Harry Driggers and between Shell Road and Highway 17. Here is the character area map. As you can see, it's developing suburban residential. Overall, the, the goal behind this classification is to encourage homeownership as well as development and redevelopment. So here's an image looking east into, from the property. Here's an image looking west. Here's looking into north. This is the 755 Harry Driggers entrance into the property. And here's looking south from the property. This is a slide from the proposed secondary emergency ingress and egress off of Highway 17 North. And this is the proposed master plan indicating approximately 408 residential lots. So in summary, basically, so these two zoning texts are very much the same. So the overall goal of this is to streamline. So basically, before, there were all these tiers based on lot size. Since this master plan is streamlining this to the smaller dimension lot, basically, it's just kind of cleaning that up a little bit. It's still allowing for the multifamily duplexes, other types of residential types that will fall under the GR residential zoning classification. The main difference between these two texts is that this is reflecting a change from 50, from 60 to 50 feet and then the side setbacks from seven feet to five. Here's a side-by-side of both PD texts. Here's a comparison chart again showing, you know, how similar these two sets of regulations are. In summary, this PD seeks to supersede the underlying Golden Isles Gateway Plan Development for residential development. They are proposing approximately 408 lots. Since this involves more than 400 lots, the Coastal Regional Commission did do the development of regional impact review. This was reviewed on August the 11th and included in your packet. On September 2nd, the Maile and Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of ZM 25-17. And these are your possible notions. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Yes, could you please put the map back up showing the layout? So the lakes or ponds, have those already been developed or is this, will that be a result of this?
So there will be more for stormwater purposes. So yeah, this is what the end result will be.
And I believe some of them are existing borrow pits that are out there now.
Could you speak one more time to the density between the two? Is there any?
So there's really not any change. So the original PD would have allowed a, a lot that was, I believe, less than a quarter acre was the dimension. Yeah, that lower, that lowest tier, less than one quarter acre. So they both allow that same size. It's just the width and that side setback that's different.
Is there a lot of wetlands on that property?
I would have to let Wesley, whether the applicant is here, he could speak more to that. Overall, it's pretty, it's pretty upland, but I'm not sure if there's, like, what percentage.
I see, I see it. I see it. All right. Any other questions?
Just Roberts.
Is it Wesley? Would you like to come up and present your case and then I'll open the public hearing?
Good evening, Commissioners. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering. Just elaborating Ms. Wright's presentation here as to why we're kind of presenting this tonight. So ultimately, this development currently is a surface mine. Mr. Duncan, answer your question. So there are active borrow pits out there that we've incorporated into the master development plan. So over the last three or four years, this area of the Plan Development Text, the Gateway PD Text, has been amended a couple of times, one of which was to allow the surface mine use on this property. The 50-foot lot reduction, actually 60 to 50-foot lot reduction. And then also an adjacent property, I believe, in the last six months, y'all approved the lot width reduction from seven to five on the lakes track. So we've incorporated that into this current Plan Development Text, which is one of the reasons, main reasons why we're pulling this out, putting in its own, obviously with the size as well. 408 lots, we felt like, to clarify the density, all the other amendments, just to put this all in one nice package so that it's clear what the intent of the development is going to be long-term. And it will be phased. The current progression of that is the first phase will be 175. That will be subsequently divided up over the next three and a half years into Phase 1A, 1B, and 1C. The intent is to develop 50 lots a year with the current homeowner that's looking to go into contractual obligations with the current landowner. And then we'll incorporate the, the surface mine areas into the stormwater retention ponds as the final reclamation part of that. So happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Anybody? All right. Thanks, sir. I'm going to now open the public hearing. Is there anyone opposed? If you are, would you please step forward, state your name? Seeing none, we'll close that. Is there anyone in, in, in favor of this rezone? If there is, please step forward, state your name. I have five minutes. Seeing none, Commissioners, it's back to y'all. Close the public hearing.
Could we see the motions, please? Chairman, I'll offer a motion.
Please.
Move to approve ZM 2517 as presented.
Second. All right, properly motioned in second. All in favor? Thank you. Number 25. ZM-25-19, 306 Kingsland Avenue. Consideration of a change of zoning request from R9 One Family Residential to MH9 One Family Residential for approximately .23 acres to allow for a mobile home. Property is located on 305 Kingsland Avenue, 03-09121. Charles J. Moulton, agent for John and Beverly Jacobs. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Christina Wright, Senior Planner. ZM 25-19 for 306 Kingsland Avenue is a request to rezone from R9 to MH9 to allow for a mobile home. So here is the location and zoning map. As you can see, the current zoning is R9. The character area map indicates it's existing traditional residential. Some of the goals within this classification are to encourage infill development. Here's an image looking north into the property. Here's an image looking south. This is looking east and west towards Whitlock from the property. So again, this is a request purely for the mobile home. As you can see in this comparative chart, the development standards are identical, other than the use. Here are the historical current plots as well as the sketch plan indicating the layout. Here's the details showing the setbacks. The Maile and Planning Commission voted unanimously on September 2nd to recommend approval of ZM 25-19. And here are your possible motions.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
What is on the exact property right now?
There is a mobile home, yeah.
All right. No questions, gentlemen? All right. Would the agent like to come up and say anything?
Good evening. I'm Chuck Moulton. I'm an attorney of Williams Ritson Moulton and I represent John Jacobs and Beverly Jacobs. This is pretty straightforward. They just wish to put a mobile home on the property. It's a nice mobile home. It's a 2019 and it'll be a nice affordable place for a citizen of Glen County to live in. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, sir. I think I'm good. Anybody? All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on this. Anyone wishes to speak against this? Would you please come forward, state your name? No opposition, so we're going to close that portion. How about anybody wants to speak in favor? Would you please come forward, state your name? All right, none, none given, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a recommendation to approve ZM-2519, 306 Kingsland Avenue, to approve the proposed zoning decision.
Second. All right, properly motioned in second. All in favor? Six oh on the. All right, moving on. Number 26, ZM 25-20. This is a Commissioner-sponsored rezoning. Hanson and Atkins PD Amendment. County-initiated zoning amendment to the Southport Plan Development District. Only parcel 03-12687 to state that paved alteration in deceleration lanes with transportation term laws are only necessary when required by county engineer. Property is located at 351 Martin Palmer Drive. Parcel number 03-12687. Parcel number O3-12687 in Zone Plan Development District, GC-07-92, 3611 Farquhar Investments LLC. Owner?
Good evening, Commissioners. Christopher Carey, Senior Planner. Before you tonight, we have a zoning amendment for the Hanson and Atkins PD Amendment. Here is the site, located along Martin Palmer and Southport Parkway. The request is to modify the plan development requirements for acceleration and deceleration lanes for transport terminals. This request would only apply to this parcel, and the proposal is only required at the discretion of the county engineer. So here's the zoning comparison. So paved acceleration and deceleration lanes are required for terminal sites if required by the county engineer. So that is the only difference in the plan development as it currently is and as it is amendment. And again, here's the site. And here's currently where potential acceleration and deceleration lanes would be required and are currently not installed. And here is your sketch plan. The Planning Commission on September second did unanimously vote to approve this, recommend approval of this action. And these are your possible motions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, gentlemen? All right. We don't have anybody from there, here. We don't have the applicant since we're correct. Okay. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak in opposition to this, would you please come forward and state your name? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anybody who want to speak in favor, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close that. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM 25-18 as presented.
Second. I thought it was 25-20.
Is that the wrong one?
Yes, ZM 25-20.
Both try again, please.
All right. Do I need to restate that or just?
Just restate it.
Just restate it? All right. You got the right one out there?
You need to, it needs to be 25-20.
Yes, it says eighteen. It should be 25-20.
Okay, all right, I got you, all right. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM-25-20 as presented.
Sir.
Properly motioned in second. All in favor? Six oh, Rondo. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Number twenty-seven. Consider the appointment of one citizen to fill the unexpired term of Chedrika Johnson for the District Four seat on the Selden Park Advisory Board. The appointment will begin immediately and then June 30th, 2027. Applicants are as follows. Brian Edwards, Sierra Hamilton, Edith Blash, Minor Scott Amos, Tova, I can't get the last two, I'm sorry. Looks like Raven Yostro, Sandra Martin Munjin, and Casey McClary. District Four Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to recommend Mr. Brian Edwards for the District Four seat on the Selden Park Advisory Board.
Aaron, do we need a second on this?
Nope.
We have Mr. Edwards. Anyone else? All right. Do we vote on that? Okay, all in favor of Mr. Edwards? All right, on the next one. Number twenty-eight. Consider the appointment of four citizens to serve at the Selden Park Advisory Board. The District One, District Two, District Five, and At-Large Post Two seats begin upon appointment and in June 30th, 2029. The applicants are as follows. We can take Mr. Edwards off now. Sierra Hamilton, Edith Blash, Minor Scott Amos, Teva Raven Yostro, Sandra Martin Munjin, and Casey McClary. I'm going to take this in the order and we'll vote on them at the end, okay? All right. The at-large nomination is Minor Scott Amos. District One tossed it, and he's not here. What do we do about that?
We'll wait till next time.
Okay, we'll have to pass on him. Commissioner Duncan?
I'll nominate Sandra Martin Munjin for the D2 Representative for the Selden Park
Commissioner Booker?
I nominate Edith Blash.
Aaron, do we vote on these?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'll call for a vote now. It's Minor Scott Haynes for at-large two, Sandra Martin Munjin for District Two, and Edith Blash for District Five. All in favor? Thank you. So we've got one more next time, Rondo. All right, number twenty-nine. It's considered the approval of a grant agreement for the Federal Aviation Administration Airpoint Grant Number 3-13-0018-052-2025 in the amount not to exceed $4,294,167 under the Airport Improvement Program Project. And the Airport Grant Number 3-13-0018-053-2025 in the amount of $2,694,985 under the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act Airport Infrastructure Grant Program for airport development. Mr. Burr?
Robert Burr, I'm the Executive Director for the Glen County Airport Commission. These are two grants associated with the project further to build the new aircraft rescue and firefighting station, Station Five, in Brooklyn, Golden Isles Airport. This project is funded partially by SPOSS funds, local funds, and also federal grants, and will also be expecting a state grant participation hopefully coming later this month. The recommendation is to accept this grant money and move ahead on the project.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
None.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the grant agreements for the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Grant Number 3-13-0018-052-2025 in the amount not to exceed $4,294,167 under the Airport Improvement Program Act and Airport Grant Number Three-13-0018-053-2025 in an amount not to exceed $2,694,985 under the Infrastructure Investment Job Act Airport Infrastructure Grant Program for airport development.
I'll second. Properly motioned in second. All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Burr. This is going to go a long way in getting that fire station built.
We're glad the FAA had some extra money there. All righty. We have one public comment. Kiara Byrd, Four McGee, Jekyll Island, Georgia, 31527. Ms. Byrd, would you come up? Please state your name. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Kiara Byrd. I live at Four McGee on Jekyll Island. I stood before this body about six or seven or eight years ago, telling you facts and sharing environmental impact studies from other destination bridges. I was echoing the sentiments of a community that was longing for changes. I spoke to Senators, Congressmen, and the Department of Transportation. I printed thousands of magnets, wallet cards, and bracelets inscribed with "You are never alone and don't lose hope," along with the National Suicide Prevention Hotline, and I distributed them for free to police departments, fire stations, and homeless shelters. The fruit of that endeavor were the signs at the entrances and apex of the bridge, displaying the hotline number along with a message of hope. Shortly thereafter, I became a Glen County Deputy Coroner. It was the biggest honor of my life, being able to be of service to the people of this county in their darkest hour, standing strong and finding answers for them, guiding them in their grief, ensuring great respect and dignity in the pursuit of truth for our citizens who no longer had a voice. It's what I believe I was born to do. After over four hundred cases, I have seen death in almost every form. I have investigated death in every manner, and during those years, it seemed as though the suicides off the bridge had slowed down. It's important to note that suicide remained far too prevalent in Glen County, but by other means. Much like myself years ago, my new friend Shannon, who's here this evening, has felt called to bring attention to the fact that there seems to be a recent increase of those who choose our bridge to end their lives. A person can live three weeks without food. A person can survive three days without water. Our brains can withstand three minutes without oxygen. However, our souls rarely bear three seconds without hope. A human being who has lost hope is not long for this world, and the availability of a way out during those moments often leads to suicide. This is why I am speaking to you today. Access and availability. I believe that it is time for this commission to revisit taking action on our bridge. I believe that it is time to reconsider potential measures to make it less accessible and less available for the hopeless. Perhaps if the walls were not so easy to step over, a person might find the will to live before they jump. A truly hopeless individual will find a way to end their pain. However, our minds are always working and our hearts are always changing. Why do we continue to abide the ownership of a destination bridge in our county with a wall so low it is almost an invitation? Why not make it difficult to scale the walls? Even one death is too many, especially if it's preventable, not to mention the accidental falls that have resulted in death. Both Shannon and myself are available for any further discussion that you might want to have, any questions that you might have. She has done a lot of homework, and I have all the homework that I did when I got the signs put up. Shannon will make available to each one of you the most recent environmental impact study for the Golden Gate Bridge, because that is just the most popular one, but there are plenty of bridges in Georgia and the surrounding states that are destination bridges that have data. The Golden Gate is only forty feet taller than our bridge. We owe it to every resident of Glen County to try, because we are all affected every time someone jumps. We owe it to every resident in South Georgia to take the City Lanier Bridge off the list of destination bridges. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Mr. Attorney, do we have need for executive session?
We do. We have personnel discuss, please.
Can I get a motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We go into executive session.
Second. Okay. We're...[1455.47]